They put it in.
I know that. It's okay.
Pretty crazy.
I don't know if maybe Brian knows it, because I know Brian and the guys were out there a few times inspecting portions of it. Regular meeting, the council order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic with which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
additions, deletions, changes to the proposed agenda for this evening. Are there any? Roll call.
President Schneider.
Present.
President Proton Dyke.
Present.
Councilmember Feldman. Councilmember Glasser.
Present.
Councilmember Kuligowski.
Present.
Councilmember Powell.
Present.
Councilmember Stuffer. Present.
Communications, they were none for this meeting. Regular meeting minutes for our March 5 council meeting. This, since this was a joint meeting amongst three governmental bodies, the roll call needs to be cleaned up a little bit, because it can get confusing. Normally, and I don't think this will be a problem, Kim, but you can tell me if it is, I think some first names need to be used.
Okay.
Because who's, which Feldman, which Glasser?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes, so when there's reference to either Glasser or Feldman, council members should be used, and council members absent should be used. So for Glasser, yes, Feldman, yes. Planning Commission. That would be Bob Miller, and DDA would be Holly.
Okay.
And Feldman, Trish.
Yep.
Just so it's clear. Ashlyn or Wayne might want you to spell her name correctly.
Yes.
So that would be helpful. Okay. Then, let's see. Agenda item number two, DDA appointment, President Schneider appointed. Yes, tense. ED at the end. Please. Anybody else on minutes? General Fund. Major Streets, Local Streets. Parks and Recreation Fund. Downtown Development Authority. Sewer Fund. Water Fund. Equipment Fund. Payroll Register Report. GPW Monthly Report. Sorry, skipped over the water report. Rental Report. Wastewater Treatment Plant Monthly Report. Ordnance Enforcement Officer Report. Construction Code Authority. Building Permits. Clerk Trezor's Report. Kim, can you just update us a little bit on this reference to Frontier and what they're doing within the village?
Actually, Ms. Ferguson could probably update you better.
Update us just a bit, what's happening with Frontier?
We met with Frontier a few weeks ago to understand the details of their build-out. They are expanding inside the village limits, so they're adding fiber optic cable throughout town. They're doing it in different sections. They're pulling permits with us. That's one of the things we reminded them of, was that they're going to be going into the ground, they have to pull a permit with us. So they will be doing boring. Right now, I think they're doing only aerial things in certain neighborhoods. So we will have another provider available this year, and I believe they have provided door hangers and flyers through the mail to almost every resident.
And they're going to be given when?
They actually started last week.
Okay, alright. So that'll be a great benefit. Trying to become a little more modernized. Thank you. So entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
I have a comment on the...
Sure, oh, please.
Consent agenda. Steve, maybe I missed it, but I don't think you said police report. I did have a comment on the police report.
I think you're right.
In our, or my comments, last meeting, I requested that Chief Martin provide some additional information on Jake breaking ordinance enforcement in the village. Was that passed along to Chief Martin?
Yes, it was.
Okay. I still would like to see that. And then, as a reminder, on council, we have requested that we get a little bit more detail for the police report in addition to the Excel spreadsheet. Just want to reiterate that request.
That will be addressed, for sure. And yeah, sorry, you are correct.
And also, just another note, that I like the inclusion of the chart for the violation categories from the OEL. Very nice.
Much easier to read.
Much easier to read, yep.
Why, just going to become a more and more significant issue, and a lot more attention paid to it?
As a result of using the new system, yeah. Very nice.
And some emphasis on that with particular regard to our present manager.
Comment on the Jake breaking, is there, I haven't seen signage of that going through town as well, so is that something we may want to post?
We could look into...
Is that going into LaPierre? I know they have that in several locations.
It would be a request, pardon me, Mr. President, can I answer?
Sure.
Okay. It would be a request to MDOT to install those, but yes, we can do that.
Okay.
I did speak with the engineer from MDOT that covers our area, inquire about that. It wasn't exactly his area, but did say that he could look into that for us. So our manager wants to pursue that along your lines as well. I think multiple lines of inquiry would be appreciated. And, you know, you're aware of this too, is that we were told that we weren't allowed to post signage due to MDOT restrictions, and he indicated there might be a little more wiggle room than we initially were aware of.
John. Anybody else, commentary, discussion regarding the consent agenda? Entertainer motion?
Support.
Motion made by President Proton Dyke, councilmembers supported by Councilmember Stuffer, approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously approved by all councilmembers who are in attendance. We're missing one this evening. So before we move on with our agenda, public comment time with regard to regular agenda items. Probably most of the audience members are aware of this, and indicate what was going to happen two meetings ago. So a public comment time, there's a three-minute time limit, and so you can make any presentation you have to make regarding any item that is on our regular agenda. And so that will be, as you know, strictly enforced, and additionally, no outbursts from the audience. And if it's a violation, law enforcement is present, and I will ask for you to be removed. Other than that, the floor is open at this point in time. It is time for public comment for any item that is on our regular agenda.
I'm Paula Alfancy from Elmont Township. I want to address social district drinking. When it was voted on two meetings ago, I don't think it was a fair vote. I don't think you guys were properly informed. There was a lot of, for one, it was all through social media, and the emails that, that's what you based it on. You never even considered the 54-plus signatures that I had. So in reality, you had 77 emails for it, and you said you had 11 emails against it, but if you add the 54 signatures that I have, that would be 77 to 65, not 80/20. That was one thing. I would also like to know if any of the emails were from the Lucy Hearts or the James Johnson families. I would be real curious to see that, but I would have to foil all that information. As far as policing the area. Chief Martin was here, but I understand, and he's agreeing that he, everybody can handle it, the police are going to handle it, but my understanding is he's leaving us in April. Is that correct?
It's not interrogation time, Paula.
Okay. So, the other thing is, I would like to point out that the previous boards, the DDA boards, were, two previous directors had full boards. Nancy Boxey had a full board, and it was run by the state guidelines. Kim Scholl had a full board, and it was run by the state guidelines. Mr. Russo comes in, forms an intentional attack on Kim Scholl, and all the board members tend to bail within months. After two years, they still do not have a full board, and it is not run according to state guidelines. They have only two business owners on the board, and I kind of hate to bring this up because I do respect some of the members. You have three cases of nepotism on this board, and it's in reality, the three family members who are on the village council board and related to the DDA members should abstain from voting on any of these, and that didn't happen. Andy spoke that all the businesses were for this, and they were all going to benefit for it. I spent the day going around to 60 different businesses. I only made it to 27, because each business that I went to, I had to explain to them what social district drinking was. They had no clue. There is eight people, I have 25 knows out of 60 businesses, that said, this is not going to help their business at all. So the interesting part was, is they act like they've all discussed this with all the businesses, and they haven't, because these businesses are confused more than ever. Eight of them put 50/50 because they really don't understand.
Time's up.
Somebody want to donate their minutes?
Do I want to donate three minutes?
I'll donate three minutes.
Thank you.
Not donating, no, that's not the rule, sorry. Paula has an opportunity to speak, she had her three minutes, and you're not donating. This is not that kind of game. We're not playing games here. There's rules. Paula's had an opportunity to make herself heard, she always does, whenever we have issues like this.
But legally, people can yield their three minutes to me.
No, cannot. Those are not our rules. We have a structure, we're going to follow it. You had, you spoke your piece.
Can I hand you out one more piece of paper?
You can, any document you want to turn in to our clerk, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you.
Since the topic has come up, let's address that issue regarding the nepotism thing.
Steve, can we, I'd like us to continue with public comment, please. This is, this is time for it to hear.
Good evening, my name is Lynn Marta. I've been resident of Elmont for 38 years. My consent...
Please.
Pardon me?
Address, please.
6816 General Squire.
Is that a village or township?
That is township.
Okay.
Alright. I'm a little confused as to the contradiction between the act that Governor Granholm, excuse me, our current governor enacted with respect to the bars being able to enact this social district, and yet the Michigan Liquor Control Commission has issued a statement that no alcohol can be retailed within 500 feet of a church or a school. So in one of the previous meetings, it was stated that the lawyers all approved this. I'm curious as to who the lawyers were that did approve this. Can anyone answer that question?
It's not interrogation time, you're allowed to make comment.
I was just asking, I'm sorry. Alright. I am very curious as to see how this is all going to shake out, because I'm thinking there's some irregularities that may crop up we haven't thought of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Keith Ferguson, 533 Johnson Street. I live right here in town. I had some questions. The rumor is, there's going to be concerts in the parking lot behind the bars. If there's concerts in the parking lot behind the bars, where are we going to park? There's already, you go up there on any night, and you struggle for a parking spot to eat at one of these three establishments. Two, would I be allowed to buy a beer at Speedway, walk across the road into the social district in the area and drink it? I don't think so. And I just think it's a problem, and I see your minds already made up, so, and probably all you people minds are already made up, so I guess I just wasted a minute and a half of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Is there more public comment?
Pam Forzek, I live within the village limits, right on Main Street. I was here in early February, and I know that you're not going to answer any questions, no matter what I say. So I would just like to make a comment about what was put on Facebook after I spoke early in February. It was clearly mocking me, and I really don't think that anybody getting hit walking across the street legally is something to be laughed at.
Can you please address the social district issue?
It is about, it is about the social district issue, because after I spoke...
Your traffic accidents regarding the social district?
Yes, because that was the reason that I spoke last, a month ago.
Please relate it to social district.
Because it's extremely dangerous crossing our streets, and the police department does not have a handle on that. I was hit walking across the street about a week or so after I spoke at this meeting, strictly about that particular issue. That is the issue that is my utmost concern, is the safety issue of the social district. Shortly after that, there was a post that was put on Mikey's, and Mr. Rose had put in his post, and the comment after it, that said, "Just don't take that drink outside, you might die." That's the mentality that we have of the DDA that's going to be running this. They think it's funny that someone gets hit walking across the street, and I hope that that does not happen to his children, himself, or anybody else sitting here, or anyone else in this community.
Any further public comment? Be none. I should say, none further. Moving on to our regular agenda, wastewater treatment plant, equipment purchase. Mr. Manager, I presume you're going to make that presentation, Clint is not present.
Well, Mr. President, the item that's in the packet is a furnace, a, that is designed to evaporate moisture out of the samples, so that they can actually weigh them. It's a standard test that is done, it must be done three times a week minimum. Our furnace is from 1988, it finally has expired, and we borrowed Emily City's backup unit, and we're operating now until we are able to purchase our own replacement. This is a direct replacement of the unit that's there, and the cost, as you can see, is above the spending limit allowed, so I have to bring it to the commission for your approval, so I'm asking for your approval to buy this. If you have any questions, I think I can answer them.
Council, any questions? Discussion?
Excuse me. This is a direct, there's going to be no, any additional installation fees, they plug and play pretty much?
Actually, it's, and the shipping's included.
Okay.
Random from our supervisor certainly appears that it's a necessity, and worse yet, I guess we're, at this point, we're violating the requirement, three tests a week?
They borrowed Emily City's unit, so they could complete the testing?
Right, yes.
Backup unit, which is a small subset, didn't you?
Yes.
I have to ask, you guys usually do your diligence, but, and I know with wastewater, there's limited vendors, but did we seek other bids other than this one?
We did, in fact. The other units are made overseas, there would be additional shipping involved, and there is no history on their life expectancy compared to this particular unit, that's the same unit we have that's lasted for decades.
And Tim, I use similar units like this in my line of work as well, and this is a very, very reasonable price. Usually, you're three times this amount, so.
Purchase of the FBE 480/25 Moffler Furnace Thermal Line, and the price of $5,940.
I'll support.
Motion made by President Proton Dyke, supported by Councilmember Kuligowski. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Objections? Unanimously approved by all councilmembers in attendance. Next item on our regular agenda is proclamation as to our former councilmember Dave Love. And I think in honor of Dave, I should read into the record the proclamation in recognition of Dave Love. Whereas David S. Love, who unselfishly dedicated 18 years of service to the Village of Elmont with great distinction and success, passed away peacefully on December 31st, 2023. And whereas David S. Love demonstrated the spirit of public service by serving on the Elmont Village Council from 2002 to 2020, and the Zoning Board of Appeals from 2004 to 2020. And whereas David S. Love and his wife Mary, in 2000 willingly set aside a portion of their property to the state of Michigan, at no cost to the village, to be designated as wetland as a wetland trade with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, so the wastewater treatment plant could be expanded onto its neighboring wetland. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Village of Elmont hereby honors the memory of David S. Love for a life of outstanding service and extraordinary contributions to the Village of Elmont. And may it be further proclaimed that we spread upon the minutes of the Village of Elmont Council as a permanent record of the achievements of and respect for one of the Village of Elmont's finest citizens, and that the original be presented to the family of David S. Love with sincere sympathy and appreciation. Be it so proclaimed this fifth day of March 2024. And that proclamation will be executed by the village manager and myself, and presented to Mary and her family. Anybody in council with any comments with regard to this proclamation?
Glad that there's 50 people here to hear about Dave Love tonight, because I can, I'll say two things about Dave Love. He had his own ideas sometimes, but for anybody, and I wish he was here tonight to discuss the social district, because I'd really like to hear what he had to say. With that said, for those who don't know Dave Love, he served this village for almost 20 years with only the village at heart. That's all he cared about was doing what he thought was right, and if he thought it was right, he didn't care what anybody else thought, he was going to do what he thought was the best for the village. And in regards to the property donation he gave, so in, back in 2000, we were ordered by the state to build a 1 million gallon overflow tank that now sits in behind the wastewater treatment plant. Well, there's wetlands back there, and we were going to have to purchase property at an expensive rate to, to have to complete this project, and he donated several acres of his own personal property up in Yale to turn into wetlands at his own cost to help the village. That, that was Dave Love in a nutshell. So for anybody that doesn't know him, appreciate somebody like that giving their time, their effort, their love to this village to serve for you. That's what Dave Love was, in a nutshell.
Dave often spoke outside the box, so to speak, and had a different take on issues than most councilmembers and a lot of people out there in the community, but his thoughts and perceptions of issues were always welcome. I always encouraged him to speak to those issues, because we should hear things from as many perspectives as possible, and Dave was that kind of man. And Tim and I attended the funeral, the service in any event, and he was also, he was a Civil War reenactor, special, special kind of man. And so this proclamation is certainly well-deserved, and was very happy to see that the village put this together. Any other comments from council?
I can't say it any better than you two. Thank you. Can't say it any better than you two, thank you.
Well said, Tim.
Public service, you don't see much of that anymore, that's for sure, and being a giver rather than a taker is an issue in our community right now, and I would say nationwide, so it's good to see. Next item on our regular agenda is Mr. John Divo. I hope I pronounced your name correctly regarding the social district. Good evening, John.
Evening, how are you, Mr. Schneider?
Good, how are you doing?
I'm doing just fine, thank you.
Good.
Not quite sure on how this went. I wrote my little poem. Probably am not going to need that much time. I do want to say thank you guys for addressing the passing of Mr. Love. When I first moved in, I'd called with a handful of questions, he was a big help, so thank you guys for that. I memorized this in less than three minutes. I won't take too much.
You have 15, actually.
I won't, I won't even take that much time, sir.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
My name is John Glenn Divo, Sr. I live at 319 Kidder Road. I'm here tonight again to talk about the up-and-coming social district in Elmont. First off, to the DDA, this is by no means a voice against you, as it may seem, but more of... to the DDA, this is by no means a voice against you, as it may seem, but more of a concern. As we look at Elmont, one must agree, it looks great again after a decade and a half of empty storefronts and dilapidated buildings, now thriving with new businesses that my household uses and truly appreciates. So thank you to those involved, past, present, and future, in making it happen, as there are those who want things to happen, and it looks as if it's being delivered, from a coat of paint to great places to eat. And if no one's been to Senior Victors yet?
Mm-hmm.
I'd say we're on the right track. However, I myself can't grip the social district, as I stated last time. As it was once a law, we couldn't drink outside the establishment, but now our government, government has given us the green light to go ahead. Personally, as I look at our nation, we see little to no consequences for any wrongdoing, from looting to crossing the border and even assaulting police officers. Some say there are still laws on public intoxication, but let's be real, who's gonna police that one when we seem to can't even get speeders under control in Elmont? Yet I will say, and I'm very happy to see, I have seen a lot of officers and a lot of pullovers getting done on Kidder Road. That, for a school zone, a residential area, that, that means something. On another note, there seems to be something on Facebook about Sergeant Black and issues with her and the police department. Seems the school ain't the only one with problems here. But hey, if we can keep 'em drunk, high, confused, hopeless, and mostly divided, then the government can have the control they long for, and it won't be a party. This is usually how it starts. The mice are away, the cat will play. We drop our guard, let the fun begin. But since it's in the name of revenue, it's gotta be okay. But that didn't seem to work with the school bond, so it makes one wonder why this subject couldn't go on the ballot. If it goes well, great, but if there's an issue, who foots the bill? One individual said we can rescind it, but this ain't the sound ordinance issue, as this one may be a huge lawsuit, probably at the taxpayers' expense, as whenever drugs or alcohol are involved, all the big boys come out for a payday. And I'm sure our government will be right there to help us out after we take care of Ukraine, Middle East, and don't forget the illegals in China. And on that note, China is now looking to sue Michigan. How about that? Laugh, if you will, as Israel did in the Old Testament, but the laughing was over when they were taken captive by the enemy. And has America really done God any favors to merit protection? Go ahead and laugh again, but we are not invincible. Remember nine eleven. Look in the paper about downtown Lapeer. Now they're going for a seventh dispensary and all the problems that that's brought on. And the residents are having a problem with the social district and the bike nights and the car shows due to the noise, but again, it's making money. Even our own fire department is having to up its game for burning issues. To the board, I know there's people behind me that, they don't like what I'm gonna say, but maybe we should address our other issues before we let this snake out of the bag. I could go on and on. And what's next? If we retract this law, then is smoking and vaping gonna come back in public places, restaurants? Because they'll say it's their right. Then we can call our YouTube friends back, Spanky Pants and Tater Salad, and they could stick their cameras in business windows. Some of you remember that, when they came here with their cameras and windows, because that's their right to do so. Would anything happen if somebody had a few beers out in the, probably not. But again, it's, they take one rule away and another rule and another rule. Their whole idea was to put socialism. Guys, we're losing our country. One law at a time that they take away. Every little thing that they give us for free, all that COVID money, I did my taxes a year later, every penny went back. And now take a look, when you go in the grocery store, the gas station, Bidenomics is not working. That's about all I got to say on it. I, I thank you guys for your time, your consideration. As we talk about Mr. Love, that's our destiny, every one of us. Be careful how much we hate each other tonight. Thank you.
Presentation and giving all your thoughts and energy to this issue, and you have encouraged a step forward, especially our interest in your focus on the word hate. What's very much disturbing to me is a problem that seemed to be enveloping our nation has apparently come into Elmont, where we have divisive, divisive issues, whether it be the school bond issue or the social district issue. It's no longer a matter what I'm picking up, whatever I pick up. I try to, as much as possible, stay off social media because that's an ugly mess. Where it isn't disagreement, it's hatred for people that don't share the same view as you. And Elmont has been a pretty solid community, which has been growing and growing more in terms of being a cohesive community, which had been moving in an upward direction. And Paula and I have been engaging each other for, I don't know, more than two decades. And, and I always respected Paula because she's, she's bright and she, she researched, researches her issue and what she has to say normally is based on some solid foundation. But I, I'm seeing things out there in terms of the vitriol towards, towards others who do not share your view, which is really disturbing to me. Because we were going in the opposite direction, that these two issues come up and boom. It's something I'm very concerned about. I, I'm hoping that my concerns are not well-founded, but what I've heard so far, they appear to be. And I, I just wanna indicate that in terms of whether the decision of Counsel, which was a six to one vote, to be honest, I was surprised. I, I had no idea whether it was gonna, whether it was gonna pass or not. But it was a rather overwhelming vote and just for myself, I have a great deal, very high respect for my fellow Counsel members, because fortunately, they all seem to be quite bright and thoughtful and look deeply into issues. We certainly do not always agree, Mindy. And, and Tim. But these, these are people who really care about our community. As I indicated last time this was up, we're up here giving a, a good portion of our private lives, our personal lives, and our business lives, just to sit here and do all of this. And the, and the DDA did not act without any foundation. A hundred and twelve communities have adopted this social districting. And we reached out and communicated with those other communities as to whether or not it was working out for them. We didn't have one negative response. So it wasn't as if we just went into this issue blind. I understand the concerns and obviously, this is another divisive issue, which is unfortunate. But what I've seen over the years, and so I am now in my twenty-ninth year of serving village government, is that until you try it, you really don't know how it's gonna turn out. It may, it may be terrific and in terms, and I say it now in terms of this revenue, because that makes it sound rather shallow, but the additional factor that the DDA considered, and I have to sit on the DDA board at all, because the chief elected official has to sit on the DDA board also, so I go to their meetings, is the greater sense of community. And especially beginning with COVID and what happened there, which was a god-awful event, and that, that's a major trauma in the whole nation. So enhancing community has been a goal, and there's been a lot of emphasis over the last few years, especially by Mindy, pushing our, the development of our park and giving more money to the park board so they could actually obtain new equipment and refurbish the grounds and, and the, the structure there. And slowly but surely, we have been, we get more money and more money and more money to the park board so they can do more. And I was very much on board with Mindy's effort because of the fact that, again, that's community, the parents and their kids and, and people from the community getting together. So, do we, do we stick our neck out on doing this? Yeah, sure. Gets chopped off? Yeah, that could happen. And unforeseen consequences. It may turn out to be a, a very positive development and it may not. And the emphasis on the ability to modify the proposed plan. If there were certain issues that were coming before us that said it endangers safety, whatever the issue might be, then there may have to be changes to it. Or worse, worse yet, if it turned out, as some of you believe, that's gonna be such a negative impact, we can rescind it. And it is being, and in present status is it has to be presented to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, which has to approve of our plan, and that has not happened as yet. Something that's been worked on, but it's, uh, it's another development. And then subsequent to that, if Michigan Liquor Control does approve it, then the taverns will have to seek their own permits for it. So there is, there's structure overseeing all of this. The village's proposal as far as the social district, and then as to the taverns, it will be requesting permits. So we don't expect it to be an out-of-control process, event occurrence in our community, but it's trying to take another step forward. I mean, I look at it as we're, we're taking, taking another step into the, the twenty-first century, is the way I see it. And it, and if it's not working out, then we'll pull it back and see. That did not work out. And whatever you, whatever you put out there, because there often are unforeseen consequences, then you deal with those consequences. So I, I was very impressed by the fact that this Counsel did approve it on a six to one vote, because it is, it was and is highly contentious. But from what I see, this Counsel saw it as something that could work for a community, and we'll find out. Counsel?
Gentleman that spoke that said you won't be listened to. If you have questions ever, I'm always here to listen to you. If you wanna meet anywhere, call me. I run down your street, trip me when I'm running by, I'll, I'll talk to you. Because I'm happy that this room's filled tonight and we know what people feel like. And, and so, you know, I've talked to several about this. I spent more than one sleepless night on the decision I made. And if anybody wants to talk to me after on why I made the decision I made, I'll be glad to discuss that also. If anybody has any questions, I'm always available. And thank you for coming tonight, because your voice is important. And our, my mind's never made up. It's, it's listening to you guys that put us here that is what I base my decisions on, so.
So I can't speak in that, right? I prefer we follow the rules.
Listen to Mindy.
We put them in place for a reason.
Like a husband listens to a wife, so. So, okay. I, I do want, and I don't wanna hog the table here. The gentleman who raised the parking issue, right now, before we have the social district, Fridays and Saturdays, that back lot behind my building and the taverns, you cannot find a parking spot. Somebody's almost driving through my, my window.
Is my interpretation correct? If they wanted to have a concert back there, they would have to come before Counsel to get approved for that anyways?
Yes, because they would have to open up the normal use areas versus the, the larger zone.
So those events would have to be handled on a case-by-case basis?
Special events?
Special events through, through, through a lot of Counsel, so.
Mm-hmm. But yeah, parking is definitely a concern. The, the, the businesses, the, the new Mikey's, it's doing extremely well. Senior Victors apparently doing extremely well. And boy, they're really filling things up. So lots of business activity even before social district. That, that's a legitimate concern.
I've also had residents call, call me and suggest going forward, we have a hot-button issue like this. One, don't act on it so quick, which I think maybe we did. And two, which I have some regard about, and two, social media is good, but there's a lot of citizens here that aren't on social media. So my thought, and, and Paula is correct, the numbers are skewed because the social media numbers were eighty to eleven, and five of those eighty were actual board members that voted yes, I like it, from two boards. So that, that actually makes it seventy-five, eleven. And then you add the fifty, you add the fifty.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four. And there's probably more than fifty in here tonight. I don't know how many are four. The, the, the balance of what people think is. It is, is different. And if we would have surveyed the community multiple ways, we might have had a better picture of what the entire community thought, so.
In my, my opposition to, to that is that it was obvious to me that it was very divisive and dragging it out over a few months, let's say, which would have given a much more, much more of an opportunity to be thought about and digested and processed.
Isn't that what we want in the, in the process, though?
Yeah, but I, I didn't, what I saw happening, and what is happening in our village, is the divisiveness continuing on. We either were gonna do it or not do it. I, I thought it would be detrimental to the community.
But there wasn't, is there divisiveness here? There's not divisiveness. They're just here, they're, they're concerned citizens here tonight saying what they think about, about this. They're just, they're here doing what, what we need to listen to on both sides, if we agree or disagree.
So you and I are not seeing a divisive issue in the same way.
No, no, I agree. But I just wanted to.
Yeah, and I applaud all the people who do, who did show up.
So thank you, thank you everybody for coming tonight. I do appreciate it.
Any other commentary from Counsel?
Well, I just wanna say that this was a very difficult decision. It's something that I struggled with myself because I see both sides of the argument. And I've said this several times now, we didn't take this decision lightly. We weren't just a rubber stamp up here for the DDA either. And I think even the meeting where we ratified this, you know, we didn't just let them off and, and just rubber stamp it and kick it out the door. Like, we were pretty rough on them, too. I mean, I look at this, you know, I make very tough decisions like this all day long, every day with groups. And sometimes you have to really filter the emotion out, because we can what-if any situation from now until the cows come home. But we don't know what we don't know. But I also look at this as a gift to the businesses downtown that want this. So it's their job to foster this and make it work. Because if it doesn't work, if we are having issues, this Counsel, if from, is my experience with these people, will not hesitate to resent, because we don't want the issues in Elmont either. We love this town. We dedicate a lot of time to this town on our own dimes, on our own personal merit, because we, we invest ourselves in our communities. And we look at it that way. When it comes to safety, I work for a safety company. It's what I do all day long. My first question, when this gentleman over here called me about this, was M fifty-three. People walking across M fifty-three. The DDA has a plan for it. We're gonna trust that that plan's gonna work. If we don't like it, we're gonna put more, more leverage behind it. You know, a gentleman asked about buying a beer out of Speedway and walking over to one of the bars. No, it's not allowed. It's right there in the rules. It's not allowed. It has to be in an approved cup. They have plans in place. And those things, I expect the businesses to monitor those things and regulate it if they wanna keep this. It's just like me handing the cars to my teenage son. He's not gonna follow the rules? Taking the car away. That's the way we all look at it here. And, and I know the, the meetings that we had, and Tim, I do have to disagree with you a little bit. I think Mindy was very adamant about this, that I think Mindy was very adamant about this, that we put it in the paper, we put it on social media because we weren't happy with how the DDA put it out there either because we weren't receiving the feedback. Because we made them go an extra mile.
But it was presented to us, we need it now. Then it was presented to us the night that we did make the decision that we were.
But we did push back and made them put it out there a little bit more, which warranted some more feedback. And it's up.
Well, we've got 60 people here tonight, or I don't know how many, but I would say the majority of these are not four.
Yeah, I mean, the turnout's coming and we're.
If we've got 60 people here tonight that weren't aware of it, then we didn't do our job.
You can only do so much. Newspaper, flyers.
I mean, yes, yes, we're receiving the feedback now, but we all have an obligation, if we're going to quote the downgrade of America, we all have an obligation to keep an eye on what's going on locally too. And people don't do it. People don't do it. They don't know what's going on in their local governments until something like this happens. You know, because I can, I mean, we can stand up here and grandstand about this too myself. So we have an obligation to keep an eye on things. And I'm, again, I applaud everybody's feedback on this. It's a tough decision. It's something that I have to live with too, being a resident of this town. I think it could be good if we take care of it and we do the right thing. And we got to do the right thing. But if it's going to be a disaster, I'll tell you right now, I'll be the first one to resent it. But I fully expect and support the DDA and the businesses downtown that if they wanted this so bad, they're going to make it work. And we got to put the burden on them.
Sure, everyone here, that the council is not a rubber stamp for the DDA. There's been some contentiousness between the two bodies. I'm not necessarily seeing things the same way. So from that standpoint, no, we're not a rubber stamp for them. Number one. Number two, normally there's nobody here, nobody shows up. It's all empty. And normally, the only time over the 29 years I've been here that people show up is when they're angry. They're mad about something. And glad you showed up.
Or concerned. They could be concerned because I don't see this crowd as mad, I see them as concerned for their community. And that's a different, that's a different attitude to have.
I was generalizing. Yeah, true. And I certainly can't take the position or say that there's no reason to be concerned. Sure, alcohol. As we've discussed a few times, we're talking about a mind altering substance. But that's humanity, unfortunately. Whether it's cigarettes or alcohol or prescribed medications or street drugs. We tried prohibition in this country, it didn't work out. No, you're not going to do that to us. So, but with, you know, any mind altering substance, yeah. It's an issue and it's worth, it's worth concern. I agree with that.
So I guess on the topic of the rubber stamping, I guess for those in the audience that are not aware, I was the sole dissenting vote for the social district in the February 20th meeting. I have heard the concerns similar to the ones mentioned today, which is why I voted no, in addition to discussions I've had with members of the community. I don't agree that approving and rescinding is the right approach in this case. I think it's our job to do our due diligence the first time and get it right. Like Tim was saying, I think we might have rushed this and that's another reason why I voted no. I think, like saying that over 120 other communities haven't had a problem with this is kind of missing the point, in my opinion. The point is that the community feels that their voice isn't being heard and they're being left out of the process. And I think that's where our real point of contention is.
Yeah. Okay. Any other council discussion on the issue? Okay. So we are now have concluded with our regular agenda. Is there any public comment as to non-agend items? It's a public comment for something that's not on our agenda. Evening, Jim.
For the ones that don't know me, I'm Jim Alec, one of the new owners of Mikey's. I have two issues I'd like to bring up. One, there's a small little rumor I heard, and I call it a rumor because it didn't come from a solid fact. But I've sat on this council and I fought for a long time to make sure that trailer park water bill was paid. And from what I understand, that bill is now behind again. And behind more than 30 days that anybody else in this town gets allowed to do it. And I think at this point, they've showed you people, if they are behind, that you need to shut their water off. It's been an ongoing thing for years here. So at this point, you need to shut their water off if their bill is behind the $50,000, I've heard. If anybody in this audience's water bill is behind, it'd be shut off if it was $200. So the other one is, I understand there's a non-smoking ordinance conversation coming up. There's already rules about that stuff. There's already laws about it. And it's not about the smoking on the sidewalk. I get it. The cigarette butts end up on the sidewalk. That's called litter. You can't enforce a red light ticket. You can't enforce the speeding down 53. How are you going to enforce if I stand in front of my business and smoke a cigarette? Because that's where I'm going to smoke every cigarette from now on. And I have a buckhand out there and we put them in it. Two or three times a week, I sweep that sidewalk. I sweep the curb. I sweep the paper that people throw out the window. That's up to the business in front of them. You can walk in any other business, there's cigarette butts outside them. So as far as making it a new ordinance, can't smoke outside, I'm going to tell you I'm the first guy that's going to do it. And when I get the ticket, I'm going to tell you I'm the first guy that's going to drag it through court. So if you think a speeding ticket costs the police department money, wait till they write a ticket for smoking because I will drag it through court. If it costs me 10 grand to not pay a $25 ticket, I will spend it. Thank you.
By the way, just so you and the audience are aware, what the council voted on was not an ordinance, it was a resolution. And any further action you may want to take, you should pay attention to that comment on my part from legality standpoint. Any other public comment for non-agend items?
Hello?
Hello?
I'm on Jimmy's side. This non-smoking ordinance says this isn't going to work. And not only do I feel that you're telling people what they can and cannot do in town, it's their life, let them live it. We sweep up every night. We sweep the lower tier, the top tier. People do miss a bucket once in a while, it ends up in the street. We sweep that up too. I don't think you're going to stop it, but I'm on Jimmy's side. I'll fight, I will fight this for a $25 ticket. Who's going to enforce it? I mean, I think the police department has better things to do than, you know, run around trying to figure out who threw a cigarette butt out the car window. And I think we already got in trouble for that 10 years ago when we landed up on national news about one of our officers giving a ticket to somebody who threw a cigarette butt out the window. So I would like that to be back on national news, being a small little town. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Any other public comment for non-agend item? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Randy Eschenberg from the Township Board. I'm here tonight because at our last Township Board meeting, we had a Act 51 resolution put in front of us for Kitter Road and Tub Spring Road. I'm sorry, Holland Road. Did the board know about this? Counsel? I guess it came to us with these three pieces of paper, that the village wanted to take control of these two roads with no explanation why. And we were supposed to sign it that night. For goodness sakes, I mean, send somebody in there to explain it to us. And I made it clear to our supervisor that at our next meeting, I don't want somebody to come in before our meeting and expect us to approve this. There's a lot of questions that are going to be answered before that.
That would be up to your township supervisor, wouldn't it? I mean, he should have.
Well, I'm here tonight for the township. I didn't, I didn't like it, the way it was presented. It was just handed to us and it was on our agenda.
All I'm saying, Randy, is then your township supervisor should have given you more advanced notice of it and should have had, and made some sort of presentation.
Time's running here, so. All I'm going to say is also too that.
Hasn't been discussed here.
On the Township Board, we had a filled crowd one night in our audience.
More than this.
We had to deal with a noise ordinance. We let people speak for more than three minutes. Why? Because they're taxpayers of Elmont. We let them speak. I feel that's what we needed to hear.
No offense, Randy, but you don't know how to run a meeting then. Because I've watched meetings like yours and I've watched meetings that take place in groups, don't you?
My name is Jacob Bulinsky from the Township. To go with that cigarette ordinance, I don't know if they're missing some stuff when they're sweeping, but I walk my dog pretty regularly on the village sidewalks in the proposed social district, and it is absolutely disgusting. Maybe someone needs to learn how to use a broom, but it's got to be a little bit better. Thank you.
Any further public comment? As to non-agend items?
My name's Dennis McCarthy. I live in Lapeer. I have a law office in the building that I own down here in Metamora, Catty Corner from the White Horse. And I'm running for probate judge. And I need 400 signatures to get on the ballot. And I have about 400 right now, but my campaign manager told me I should get 500. So just wanted to introduce myself. So far, I don't have any opposition, so.
Want to get votes? Want to get votes, Dennis?
So I just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you.
We'll say that Dennis and I have clashed frequently in court, et cetera. He is a good attorney, he's a good man, so.
Yes, I'm back. By the way, I'm an elected official here in Elmont for 33 years. So I know how to run a board meeting. I am curious as to what happened to the video from the meeting you had at the fire hall because it's not on YouTube. I have friends who wanted to see it. We can't find it.
There is no video. The internet connection at the fire hall is too weak to allow the video to play through.
Okay. Is there a transcription of that meeting?
No.
No notes, no?
There's minutes.
Okay. Is there a way you can obtain those?
They're online.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Internet connection buffered that night and the connection died. All right.
Is it okay if I talk on an agenda item? No?
I think that time has passed.
Not if you're hearing everything? Well, I'd like to clarify a couple of things if you wouldn't mind.
It was an agenda item, Andy.
It would violate the rules.
No, that's fine.
Non-agenda, thank you. Any further public comment for non-agend items?
It's me again, John Glendivo, 319 Kitter. After all this, I might start drinking and smoking again. Curious, it was talked about a couple of years ago when they ran the new township sidewalk in down Kitter Road, that it was going to be extended down to Elmont Road and then up and around. Just curious, that's right in my front yard and would like to know if I'm going to wake up from a nap and that ditch disappear like the other one did? And just curious if there was any talk on that or if that was just.
Specifically where? Because in front of your house, there's sidewalks on both sides now.
Correct. What I was told at one of the car shows, and I couldn't even tell you who said it, was they were going to extend that as a wide sidewalk right down to Elmont Road.
In front of the substation?
Pardon me?
In front of the substation?
Yes. Or was it just going to go from my neighbors down to the substation? Just didn't know. Try to do an icebreaker or something in here tonight.
Nothing? I know there were some talks with DTE about some sidewalk issues, but I think that was more off of the Drakeshire area where they owed some sidewalks or something with the new substation.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
But I don't know if that was part of that or not, so that I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Further public comment for non-agend items?
Yeah, my name is Deirdre Leesman. I'm at 120 Bristol Street North. I've been in between Elmont Township and the Village of Elmont here for 32 years. I love this village, I love this town. I lived in both of them. I, I'm ashamed at how people throw paper in the parking lots. I clean it up every day, try to clean it up every day. No matter if they throw it or not, I'm still going to pick it up because I feel I want my area, try to keep it clean as I can. There's still bottles I picked up, one of those one ounce liquor bottles. I'm not saying against, the drinking thing is besides me. I mean, I drink, so, I mean, not all the time, but I have a drink once in a while. My yard, the front sidewalk is horrible. I've seen them put sidewalks in around the town where the sidewalk has been put in at the same angle as a driveway. And there's been, there'd been one time where I tried to drive down the sidewalk and because of the angle of the sidewalk at the driveway point, it made me curve and run into the street on St. Clair Street and I almost got hit by a car. Might as well go on, the park, the seats you have downtown, all sharp corners for kids to bump their head on. If it was a round corner, the kids wouldn't, if they bumped their head, they might get a bruise, but you get to bump your head on a sharp corner and it's going to crack a skull. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Any further public comment this evening for non-agend items? Being none, we are now finished with our regular agenda and our public comment time and we're moving to open discussion. You may want to hang around for our audience because non-smoking ordinance in downtown district. It's open for discussion. And one of our council members wanted this on the agenda and it's his turn, I think.
Yeah, that was me. And Jim, it's not about the butts. It's about, the talk in the social district was bringing more people downtown. Families enjoying downtown, families and people enjoying downtown. Well, one of the concerns I had about the social district is our sidewalk, if you go to Emily City, they don't have a social district yet. If you go to Lapeer, if you go to Oxford, their sidewalks are wide. You've got a lot of walking room, a lot of places to meander. The area where the social district mainly is between St. Clair and the alleyway by the museum, the sidewalks are narrow. And in two or three places, you've got triangled out, triangled out flower boxes where you can only walk one or.
Triangled out, triangled out flower boxes where you can only walk one abreast. They're, they're in that whole area. So it's not about the butts. The businesses need to be responsible for cleaning that up. The, the idea is, is that we want to clean downtown in a, in a clean atmosphere. Where families are enjoying that area while they're having their, their social drinking. And, um, no, no disrespect to you, Chickie, but when you have people out there smoking, there's three or four out there usually at a time up on that ramp. It, it crowds the air. Um, so, so if we're gonna have a social district with more people downtown, more families downtown, is the emit of, my concern is one, health, but two. The atmosphere and, and the ability of people to traverse downtown without having to inhale secondhand smoke. It's a health, it's one, a health issue, but two, it's, it's an enhancement issue of. People being able to enjoy the atmosphere downtown without having to intake cigarettes. Yeah.
So, well, on the tear, they're standing against the rally, there's plenty of room up there.
But, but people traversing by dancers or, you know, going to the dance studio, but they're, but it's secondhand smoke.
Okay.
The exhaust is worse than that.
The, most of the businesses over by me close at five o'clock and not even. But somebody took out my stairs. Otherwise, I could throw them on the floors here because there's plenty of room down there. I don't know who took the stairs out. But nobody out here asked me.
It was part of the enhanced, uh, project of the DDA because the, they were having issues with that ramp.
Okay, well, either way, I still have like skateboard kids and everybody else soaking over, up and down a ramp anyways.
So I.
Over the rally.
So I had to put on the agenda so we could have this kind of discourse.
Right, but I mean, I could throw, because right now I'm not even part of the social district because everybody's telling me there's not enough room. Where I actually have plenty of room. We've been hanging out at that place, we've been hanging out outside for over twenty-five years. So there is room out there. Whether it's smoking, drinking, whatever, there is still room down there. If you wanted me to get them off the rally, put back my stairs.
Enough to be too technical. You are still in the social district, but you were eliminated, shall we say, from the common area. At the, at the front of your bar. And I know you'd like to address counsel sometime about that, but that's another, that's another issue, but what it's. What, what, it's, it's, what your position bumps up against him is. So we have. A law that says you cannot smoke inside of the buildings in the side of the taverns. So all the time outside of the taverns, you see people out on the sidewalk now smoking because they can't smoke inside. So then you would be telling them, you can't smoke inside and you can't smoke outside, so.
They can, they can smoke outside, just not on, on Main Street.
Okay, so you, you want to tell them to go in back of the building where the trees are going through the cars? Some kind of disaster area.
All the times there are more of a hazard.
Andy?
Can I, are we allowed to come out and talk on the city?
Smoking issue, yeah.
Well, you're asking from a crowd, I can give you a little context of the sidewalk.
Prefer that we stick to the rules that we set in place.
Nobody can talk.
Well, you're, you're getting, you're getting tired of smoking people. Tim said he wanted a discussion on it. Tim opened the door to discussion. Could I come out and talk?
We need to, we need to establish the order, please.
Well, you already said you want a discussion, Tim. Do you want me to come out and talk or do you want me to do it from here? I'll, you guys can come out and talk, so it's on the record because people online are telling me they can't hear. I'll be glad to come up and clarify some stuff about the stairs.
So.
If you have a comment about smoking specifically, state it.
Yeah. So when we did the original plan a couple of years ago. We actually looked at building out that area and giving them a wider area for people to hang out for, right? We were gonna bring that out. To be within ADA of people walking by to give Chickie more area in the stoop. That was shot down, okay? So unfortunately, we did that because at the time, people were concerned of unfortunately, people hanging out in front of our business. So at the time, we thought through actually giving them more room to not do what we're doing now, but unfortunately, that proposal was shot down. Okay, so that is there. There's plenty of room that's there. She's been doing it for how many years out there?
Over twenty-five.
Right, now it's an issue, right? So it, it hasn't been policed before. Why all of a sudden you policing it now? Yeah, I brought it up at the last meeting, but I brought it up for the fact that you haven't done anything about twenty, thirty years.
So since we haven't done anything about it for twenty, thirty years, I thought it was off, I thought it was worth a discussion. That's why.
It is, it is. So, so maybe give us about fifty grand and I'll build back out that area, that stoop we were looking to do. She'll have plenty of area up there for her patrons. We'll solve the problem.
To use your DDA money to do that?
Well, we're, we might be spending three fifty for more parking spots, two hundred for more parking spots. I'll be glad to look at money for all sorts of stuff. There's a lot that we're looking at to expand the area, but hampering her just because of her is a problem. But if we gotta spend fifty grand so her patrons can go outside, so you can walk hand in hand with your wife down there, we'll do it. I'll make it happen. Or we'll make it happen. But we did look at remedying that issue before and we were shot down by them, just so everybody knows.
Further discussion from council as to smoking issue?
You guys open the door.
Yep. Today, when I went and spoke with approximately twenty-five to thirty business owners. Yes, it is.
Okay, keep it up, boy.
Um.
Andy?
They talked.
Be respectful, be respectful.
I am.
Be respectful, no you're not. Be respectful.
They were talking about the smoking issue. And I had to explain to them about, with every single one, I had to explain to them about this DDA drinking stuff, okay? And then it would come up, does this have something to do with the smoking issue? And you'd be surprised, I'm not at liberty to say, but you'd be surprised about the business owners that are upset that. The cigarette butts and everything, they're behind you. And it's because they're tired of seeing the smoking. When you drive through Elmont, that's what you see in front of our businesses. And it doesn't encourage people to stop. And that's not me saying it, it was them. And, um, one particular guy, I was floored because I thought for sure, you know, he'd be behind social drinking. And he's, he's no, and he commented about the cigarette smoking and how much they would like. The, the, um, commons area to be moved behind the buildings because of the smoking. People get out of their cars, you have your kids and everything, and they said they don't want to deal with the smoke going into the businesses. And that's what I heard today from about three or four people.
Actually, input, I'm cutting off further public comment on it. Is there any further discussion amongst council members with regard to Tim's issue?
Well, I just brought it up to get. Council's input to see if it's something that you wanted to pursue further. Um, I've stated my, my reasoning why I wanted to open the floor for discussion, so.
Um, what are the current rules about smoking in front of businesses? Is there entrances, a sort of a setback?
What I've seen in certain buildings, um, so I believe it's part of the law, you're not supposed to smoke within twenty-five feet of the entrance.
That's what I thought.
Which nobody obeys, but.
It might even be fifty feet.
The taverns, I think there's some distance.
If I remember at, at my place of employment, this is in Oakland County, it was fifty feet, but I don't know if that was statewide or.
Yeah, so.
I've seen twenty-five feet.
Yeah, any discussion for me, I'd like a start of understanding the baseline for what the existing rules are and, you know, what.
Well, that would, that would have the village manager bring back more information to us and that's why we put it on for open discussion tonight to see if we wanted to pursue that further or not.
Um, I wouldn't mind seeing those rules.
And maybe see if any other. Maybe see if any other communities have anything in place. I mean. My whole intention was I thought it would be make downtown cleaner for people enjoying the social district. So not, not to hamper the businesses, but.
Checking with the other social districts that have been adopted, where they have adopted over a hundred, however many.
And I guess with. With this new concern, um, on top of this, I know we briefly talked about this, you know, I guess the, my question is for the DDA as well. Why didn't we consider behind the building for those designated areas? To me, it makes more sense. It's a, it's.
Behind the buildings in a lot of areas too.
Right, wait, and that, that's, I guess if that's the rationale, but, uh.
But that's a different topic for a good time.
Yeah.
It was the same point.
You want to answer to that?
Oh, me, you and I can talk after the meeting and. To, to stay on point, but, uh, um, yeah, this is a great concern. Maybe that, that is an option to explore, so. But yeah, I would like to better know what the, the current rules are, what they. What they imply. I mean, this has been in effect for a very long time in the state of Michigan. Yeah, I mean.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Sure is interesting. You can drink, you can't drink, you can't smoke, you can't smoke.
Right.
Talk about overregulation. Jesus Christ. Oh, boy. Um, any further discussion on, uh, this, um, non-smoking ordinance?
So the next time this, uh, topic comes up, can we have the, the DDA like officially come in and. I, because as a newer member of the board, I don't know what has been presented in the past when people talk about what's been presented, what hasn't been, um.
To what issue?
Well, um, I guess regarding this, uh, smoking areas and, you know, going behind the buildings, I, I'd like to see what presentations were possibly given to the council before or if they have new ideas.
Doesn't exist.
Okay, I'm aware of it.
Smoking's never been discussed, um, by DDA. This just came out of the blues because of the meeting we had. Um, two meetings before. And. DDA has not engaged with council as to the issue. It just, it came, um, out of the blue, so to speak. I think maybe you had some input from citizens regarding that, so there, there was nothing prior.
And Andy actually mentioned we haven't been regulating, you know, we haven't regulated it in thirty years, so why don't we create an ordinance? And I'm like, oh, we're doing the social district and we want to clean, clean air downtown while people are out enjoying their drinking. It might be a good idea to do that.
Discussed. So you know what you have to do, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. So are we concluded with, um, that issue? All right, fine. Comment time. Anything to bring to council, Mr. Manager?
Yes, I have a few items, but a couple that I've added since we've been sitting here this evening, uh, Mr. President. The first, uh, I, I knew this might come up this evening. Uh, this village got a ruling from its attorney back in December of twenty twenty-two. That in regard to DDA's nepotism is not. Uh, it is not nepotism to appoint someone to the DDA board that is or has. An elected official or another member involved in a board or committee, so. Uh, that question came up. I have that document in my hand, so I thought I'd just remind you of that. The city attorney has, or village attorney has reviewed it and ruled that, uh, that it is in fact not nepotism. Another item that was on my list is I had a great meeting with the regional DTE rep. Uh, we, I had him in town because of issues that I noticed. Uh, around town with new poles going in place, uh, extra poles going in place, how the poles being in our road right of ways. Uh, and one of the topics, the main topic or the first item that got my attention when I toured town was. A big section of missing sidewalk on DTE property, when I know that they pride themselves on being good community stewards. Uh, they actually installed a driveway without a permit and they have a, a big area, uh, that is void of sidewalk on their property. So, uh, he assured me that they would be looking into that and taking care of it very soon. And even asked if we had a contractor that we used that could do it and I said, no, you're gonna have to handle that all on your own. But you can look forward to that being, uh, something that's taken care of in the future. Something very disappointing that I heard this evening is the concern from the township board regarding the item. That I made you aware of in my last memo. In my first day on the job, I noticed that there was a big section of roadway in front of the school that wasn't cared for, very icy. Uh, and I spoke to our staff and they let me know it was county maintained road. We're on the far corner of the county, uh, off the main road. It's a section of road that would be more difficult for them to hit. Uh, matter of fact, in the memo I gave you or just the very brief note in the last agenda. Uh, those two sections of road I had noticed had been a problem and there's a lot of traffic from our residents, township residents. Uh, and of course, children coming into school early in the morning before the, uh, road crews can get there. Our. Road crews pass over it multiple times every morning and day because they're traveling to the, uh, the piece out in front of, uh, Village Hall. They're traveling to the industrial park, so they're going up and down that section of road, but they have no responsibility for it. Uh, the corner up at Tub Springs and is always, uh, uh, worse than usual, but again. It is a priority for the county road commission, but it's tougher for them to get to it than it would be us. So, uh, I had. At least two thorough discussions with the township supervisor. We discussed it with the county road commission engineer, uh, manager. And they thought it was a great idea for the village to take over those two sections of road so that they would be treated quicker. Uh, more appropriately in the winter in particular, uh, and then. We could go through the process. They were behind it. I was under the impression the township supervisor was behind it and would have conveyed that, so. Uh, I asked to go forward with the paperwork, the steps, as I think I noted in my little memo was. It has to go to the township board to be released jurisdiction. Then it would go to the county road commission to open up the jurisdiction and then it comes back to us to accept the jurisdiction. Uh, I laid a little groundwork with you, um, as I say, a couple of weeks ago. But I thought that was a, a pretty smooth thing that was gonna come down, uh, through the process. I thought it had been discussed. Evidently, it had not, and there would be some objection to, uh, our crews maintaining those sections of road. Over the distant county road commission, so I'll, uh, I'll, I actually was invited today to the township board meeting, their next board meeting. Next month, uh, so I was planning to attend and go over these, this with a little more detail with them.
One quick question, um, and along with that, um, responsibility for maintaining the road, we have the ability to set speed limits?
Absolutely. Uh, that was an item, a matter of fact, that was almost a joyful topic that. That would be great because then the village has the authority to set its own speed limits. And the township was unable to get cooperation from the state police to reduce the speed in front of the school. So they were excited that that would happen and we would obviously mark it the same as it is, uh, going by Village Hall. But that's just, would have been another plus in the process, but thanks for bringing that up.
Question about, I guess, the, the salt material, things of that nature, would that just be put onto the village budget then, or would there be a charge back to?
No, there's a, a slight revenue that comes from jurisdictional control of the roadway. So that we would receive the revenue for that section of road, uh, instead of.
Instead of.
Township that assigns it to the county road.
Okay.
What's the total footage of the roads we're inheriting?
I, I can't give you an exact footage because I didn't go out and measure. We have to do that after, uh, but it's roughly a mile.
Okay, so for. If we're bringing on a mile, that means we're also responsible for maintaining that going forward, correct? But we get the X fifty-one money for it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why I say now that money is, uh, awarded to the township who automatically assigns it to the road commission to do that.
My only concern is, is a few years ago, we already inherited from McIntosh to Drakeshire because of. Um, the, uh, melting laws, the frost laws. Um, and adding more road with our village with, with the roads are already.
Right.
In conditions. In conditions. Hesitant to want to inherit more road that I've got to keep maintained and paved.
Sure, sure. Well, again, if the pluses that I laid out wouldn't be adequate, then we wouldn't accept jurisdiction in the end. But at this point, the the process had started and again, I thought we were moving along quite smoothly, but I I'm mistaken with that.
As usual, be balancing act, pros and cons, and we deal with so much of the time. Sorry.
So the next item I was gonna touch base on is I'd been waiting for. A proposal for a new DPW building construction from the ground up. That was one of your major topics when I I was brought on board, so now I have received that with some basic plans. We have now a hard number that we can use to look at all of the options available to us. And again, I think I put in my last note that I would expect to have that to the board the end of this month. Oh, exciting news, we're going to be lining our sludge tank at the wastewater treatment plants starting Monday. That is a project you awarded last year and they've been waiting for a minimum weather standards to be able to come in and do that. So that project will start when it's completed and be while it's ongoing, they're gonna clean a line that was. A problem caused by the deteriorating sludge tank, replace the pump that was damaged and then the plant will be. With the new door and the new pump in place, it'll be back up to smooth full operation. We had an excellent meeting today, the treasurer and I and the DPW or DDDA executive director. We looked at their budget and their plans for the next year, it went very well and I look forward to. I didn't know that I was to be or have been invited to DDA board meetings, but I'm definitely gonna be attending at least the next DDA board meeting. We've got. An enormous amount of information that went out to four different companies to bid our property and liability insurance. Those are finally complete, so by the beginning of April, we'll start to get those. Proposals, so we then can weigh them and I can make a recommendation to the council on who we should select for our insurance provider going forward. Oh, another big topic that was brought up here this evening and I can't give you a absolutely definitive answer, but. I had a great meeting with the manager of the. Mobile Home Community yesterday. They asked for an extension, they were given none and they contacted me in writing today to say that they would be in. One of the items that was the topic was their water bill, they would be in to pay it in full today. I I neglected to ask the ladies when they left if they had actually stopped in, but they know that their water will be shut off tomorrow if it isn't paid in full by tomorrow. Additionally, we talked about their tax paying history and how we have implemented the maximum penalty going forward on a monthly basis. I gave them an example bill of what it will cost them if they're late on their tax payments going forward. I don't know if you know that, but they have to pay monthly. And I understand that if they lose their manager, they won't have someone in place to see to that, but they're gonna have to make a deeper bench to ensure that they do. Cover those items because there will be a very significant penalty if they're late again and and they've had a copy of that. We had a, we also talked about them expanding their property. I have discussed with the township supervisor, the if they would be opposed to the park expanding. He was, I was told no, so I've conveyed to the park manager that. We would not be opposed to seeing plans for them to expand as well. Affordable housing is an important thing in high demand at the moment and I think if they were to expand, we could make it. Work and make it compliant with all of today's codes and regulations. And the last thing I have on my list is. I was doing sign enforcement, I notified you of this in writing in my last report, but I'll bring it up again and then I'm gonna ask the. Local papers to cover this a little further tomorrow when we pick them up, but when I was out to doing some sign enforcement. I spoke to the wonderful people at Creekside and they were so. Impressed with the way the Chili Cook-Off went and the interest in the Pocket Park that they have donated. To. Natural gas or propane gas fireplaces to use for events in town. If you recall, at the Chili Cook-Off, there was a small wood burning fire pit that got a lot of attention. This would be just very, very much cleaner and safer way to enjoy the outdoors in our downtown and they can be used at any time. With it being propane and I I thought it was very generous of them. I had actually been inquiring to see what the costs were and they just jumped right in and said they were willing to donate. Two to the village and the DDA and so I picked them up tomorrow, they're in, we're gonna go pick them up and get photos and and all that sort of stuff, so. That's it on, of course, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
DTE property, which where was that located? Was that the substation?
Station in town is on the corner of.
Kitter and.
Kitter and St. Clair.
So that is the the sidewalk that the gentleman mentioned as well. Did you hear that about the sidewalk? That was in front of the substation, the sidewalk that.
Do you know, Dale, whether the lagoon is still. In place operational as to expanding the trailer park? They had, because they they didn't have their own sewer capacity, as I understood it, and so they had actually. I think built a lagoon back there, it's how it swamped back there. I used to run that area with my dog. But but I I had understood when they wanted to put that, when he wanted to expand the Mobile Home Park previously, they had established some sort of lagoon. And so that's something that certainly would have to be looked at.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And why, had they been presented?
No.
Okay.
I think what Dale's saying is they have interest and they were seeking if they wanted to take further steps, I think that's where it's at right now.
Okay, all right.
And just so you know, I know they have a sewer system, I don't know if they if it's a lagoon is part of it. But in the over aerial photo that we were looking at at the time discussing it, I I didn't notice anything like that in the in the photo, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions of our manager?
Kim, anything to bring to council?
Sir.
Wayne?
No, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out and getting all your thoughts and so we can look at that in the future and appreciate everyone's time, taking time out, come out.
Tim?
No, just thanks for everybody for coming out and I know what Mindy's gonna say, so I'm sorry I broke protocol tonight.
I wasn't even gonna mention it.
So you're not gonna mention it?
Not gonna mention it. So my last comments to council, I had mentioned that I invited Clinton River Watershed Council to come to this meeting. Unfortunately, because of the cancellation of park board meeting due to illness. They were, they felt it would best would be best to talk to park board, see what interest level they're in projects in the park and then come talk to council, so. We're gonna push that back until that's probably gonna be May, unfortunately. But just wanted to let you know that 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 still is in the works, it it just got pushed back due to meetings getting canceled. Another thing I wanted to just briefly mention is that I did have that conversation with the engineer from MDOT that covers this area. And it was really, really nice conversation, actually, some of you may be surprised, but we did chat about a number of items. Improving crossing safety at M fifty-three. He had some ideas for us to consider to increase visibility, to provide some more protection for pedestrians crossing that area. Some of them might involve losing a parking space or two, sort of extending the curb out so that there would be a shorter stretch that people would have to walk. So he had some ideas that we could consider. So if, you know, council is interested in hearing what those might be, we could engage with MDOT and have them come out and explain what options might be available. We also talked about the, yeah, we also talked about the curve, about how we might improve. Visibility for people to slow down, particularly trucks in that area. I know we engaged with them before and that's where we came up with the the hash marks that they laid down in that area, those are starting to wear, so.
MDOT created that mess.
Yeah, so.
We took out the island.
We also, you know, talked about some other, some increased signage, some visibility in that area. And also kind of good news is that another area that we're concerned about is the Rite Aid Plaza pullout. And he said that he believed that we were met the timeframe for doing another traffic study. At least the initial one to determine if a a greater study would be needed for the potential of a light in that area, again. Slowing traffic down, having the ability to more easily turn left, so I think that was really good and productive conversation. One thing I wasn't really happy to hear was that there. I think it's past considering that the light that we have for pedestrians now across from the former PNC is slated for removal. Yeah, unfortunately, it sounded like there was some misunderstanding of who they should be communicating with that on. So they're now aware that that person would be Dale. And he also mentioned that they may be able to push that decision back since we didn't have input. In in that decision making, so I passed along your information, Dale, for them to reach out to. But yeah, I'm sure we want to be talking about that.
We need to convince them to keep that light, I mean.
Yeah, I agree, I I expressed my dissatisfaction with the removal of that light.
The homes in Michigan that they're playing with and we're talking about.
Taken out, yeah.
Safety and.
But that's why the light isn't working is they said, well, when we do the study, they remove the ability to push it.
They turned it back on during the summer and then turned it off in September.
I don't know what's going on there, so.
That's when schools start.
But I, yeah, I requested we get an update, so I don't know if they've reached out to you yet, Dale, but I was gonna touch base with them again and make sure that. We get you guys connected. And I think that's it.
Thank you, everyone, for your your feedback, you know, together we'll make a stronger community, for sure, and then Dale, thank you for all the the good news that you shared today. One thing I do want to bring up, speaking of speed enforcement within the village, I know we had talked to Mr. Trent. A while ago before he went out on medical was some of the visual haptic speed signs. At least on St. Clair, Elmont Avenue, I've noticed that in some of the other towns and villages in the area, they put those the digital speed limit signs. In many locations like in Leonard, those sorts of things. It seems like when we have our police trailer sitting out, I actually physically see people slowing down and actually paying attention. I think it's better than just a regular average Joe sign. I know I looked them up at one point in time to even have one put into Drakeshire, I think they're about six, seven thousand apiece, but. I don't know if there's any grant money out there or whatever, but at least on some of our major side streets, I think it'd be a good start just to help.
It's budget season.
Yeah, so I think it's worth exploring at this point in time, seeing them pop up in many communities around us and and it it gets my attention. Driving to work every morning through those those areas and just a quick reminder to slow down a bit, so. All right, that's all I have. Steve?
I had a technical question for Kim, so in the regarding the video and the live stream. I'm concerned about, in the essence of transparency, residents not being able to view the live stream. It seems to be an ongoing issue and I I don't know what the root cause is and I'm not. I just like would like to know, you know, is it an internet issue, is it a recording issue? I'm wondering, is there a way we can back up a video and do a live stream at the same time or is do we need? Some kind of technical support, because I think it's good to have a a recording of all of our meetings.
We would definitely need technical support because I am. The IT button pusher, so I just push buttons until it works, so.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, no, I'm not asking you to solve it, I'm just asking, is there something we can do so we? Because it seems like every other meeting we have, there's, and I'm not blaming you or the software or anything, I just want to figure out what what the issue is.
I, at the fire hall, I believe it was a bandwidth issue because we had seven computers on the wifi or actually eight computers on the wifi. And that's what I've been told, it's a bandwidth issue. Here, I'm not sure, because at the last meeting, it buffered. So and we're connected directly to fiber, so that I don't understand, so I'll have to get someone.
Yeah, like, do they have a support number or something we can call or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can try to reach out to our IT company.
Okay. And then the only other thing I had, Dale, I have a question on on the Priest Paving Category B road project, I don't know if you. Have any update on that, I know it started last fall, probably before you were here. They were supposed to continue their paving work in the subdivisions, I don't know if you have a have heard from them when they plan on continuing.
I know we're aware of it, they're aware of it, but I have not heard a start date. The key to asphalt is temperature, so it has to be a consistent, I just took the class, so. Has to be a consistent ground temperature before you start paving and I I can't imagine they'd be able to start before the end of April, mid-April. But we can find out what the the plan is now.
Yeah.
When the plants open and get things rolling.
Yeah, but yes, we can know give notice to the residents and.
Sure.
That's all I had.
Do you know whether Mobile Home Park showed up today?
They hadn't as of four o'clock, but I'm not sure after that.
It's all weird. Tomorrow? And what? We have to keep in mind, and this is something that we. Hashed over for, I think, a couple of years. So if you shut off the water, you're going to affect the habitation. Of. At least five hundred people inside that trailer park, if you just shut off the water, especially with no notice. I've always understood Mr. Alex's aggressiveness on that issue and he did help push the issue and he made a difference. He did a great job, mainly I think he scared the hell out of them, because he kept saying, we're gonna shut your water off. And the park owners do not appear to be called human terriums, they don't care so much about the people in there. But on the other hand, we should, and so if you're just gonna turn the water off, it's like you have all those people in there. Some are just a single resident, some are a couple and some many have children. So whatever steps we take, I think we have to take that into consideration.
I agree, Steve, it's no fault of their own.
Yeah, yeah, and and then when we started coming down on them. They 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 raised the rent, because it used to be that I think they were billed individually and then they stopped doing that. And then and they raised the rent for them and but weren't providing appropriate services. It's kind of a nightmare situation, but obviously the village does have to be paid for water, but I think we have to do it with. but I think we have to do it with rationality and considering.
It was my intent, our plan would be to, it was 154 active units in the park. We would have prepared a flyer with notice of the individuals we've worked with, the owner and the manager and their phone numbers to contact once the water is actually shut off because calling us won't help. So that would have happened before we shut the water off.
Yes, thank you.
I guess with regards to management of that park, constantly, constant turnover. The local management doesn't get much support from the regional management.
So it'd be clear the plan is to make flyers tomorrow, hand them out and then shut it off?
If, if we have to shut it off, we will notify them first.
Yeah, at least by the end of the day. At least close a business to contact their landlord and if not by four o'clock, then.
Yeah, if you're an individual homeowner and you haven't paid your bill, you're well aware. They, they may not know and may need to prepare. I mean, they could, you know, be elderly, have limited transportation and no resources. So we need to give them notice.
Bathroom facilities, so when they go in the backyard? It's kind of a nightmare scenario. So any event, yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, so all you, obviously you came here because you have interest in the community and well-being of it. Thanks, it's much appreciated. We're adjourned.